All right, looks like we're ready to go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, August 3, 2022, meeting of the Edina City Council. It is 7:04. Preliminary to starting the meeting, folks, I think maybe heard our Communications Director, Jennifer Bennerott, but if you are watching the meeting on cable TV or at edinamn.gov, live meetings, or on Facebook, you'll have a couple of opportunities to participate in the meeting this evening. One of them is during public comment, community comment, and then the other is public hearings. There was one public hearing matter this evening. You can call 888-504-7949. The number is on the screen, and the participant code is there as well. Press 416427. Press *1 on your telephone keypad to speak to the operator, and then the operator will introduce you, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council when we get to those appropriate portions of the agenda. Remember, with respect to community comment, you cannot speak to the council this evening on something that's on the agenda already or scheduled for a future public hearing. So having provided that information, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Houghlin?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone on the council or from a staff standpoint that wishes to modify the agenda in any form or fashion? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the meeting agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carried. And now we are back to community comment. So, folks, if you want to talk to the council about something that's on your mind, of concern to you, whether you're in the chambers or you are tuning in in the virtual world, if you're calling in, 888-504-7949. There's the number up on the screen. We're going to handle folks in the audience first. Passcode is 416427. Keep that in mind. And now we're going to go to folks that might want to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda tonight or scheduled for a future public hearing. So ma'am, please come forward.
My name's Ruth Ann Metzger. I live at 5600 Dale Avenue in the Melody Lake A area. And as you know, from last council meeting, we don't have grass yet from our project from last year. We also have additional concerns. We have had to water our own yards since July 18. We have not seen a water truck since then. And after July 18, within that week, I was reseeded twice by the contractor. So I have spent 22 hours watering my yard, and we are wondering if the city is going to cut us a break in our watering bills. And what happens if this, now we're into the herbicide phase of Plan B, I call it, and if that doesn't work, what's the plan after that? And will we have grass by the end of the season? Our 2021 project is not complete. The railroad tracks on Hanson Road, through that intersection, the road has not been reconstructed. The sidewalk to Hanson Road is not complete. The intersection of 56th and Dale is horrible. In fact, today, I had another big construction truck go from Dale onto 56th through my corner yard and level three of the stakes I have put up there to protect the yard. So we are wondering, in my neighborhood, if we are going to be assessed before our project is complete. And the fire hydrant that has been moved from the north side of 56th Street to the intersection, which is on the south side, in the bump out, the big trucks are hesitant to even try to back up, to be able to stay in the street when they turn the corner, because they potentially would hit the fire truck. And I've been out in the yard working multiple times to see the big cement trucks go to turn the corner. They lift up their back wheels, but they still can't make the corner. So I just want to make sure the city is aware of these open items from last year's project, and my neighborhood is not pleased with the outcome to date.
Ms. Metzger, hold on just a moment. I want to make sure I understand that turning problem. Is that, and I've been to your house. I spent time walking both sides of your house because of the email that you sent a while back articulating all of these things, I thought, in great detail. So I wanted to see where the problems were on the, towards Hanson Road, you know, where you said, I think, the fire hydrants have been stacked and other material have been stacked in your yard.
In the backyard along 56th Street where the sidewalk is.
But when you talk about that turning problem, are you talking about when they come up from Hanson Road and then they want to turn on Dale?
No, it's from Dale onto 56th Street.
On to 56th.
Going west.
Going westbound.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Because they want to get to Hanson.
Okay.
And we've got a demo in our neighborhood, and there are very many construction trucks, cement trucks, garbage trucks, and even the school buses will have trouble once school starts up, because with the group home and the way Dale is configured with that bump out, the group home worker or workers park on Dale as close as they can to the corner, which then takes away room for people to swing wide, going either from Dale to 56th or 56 to Dale.
I noticed that when I was over there, and Chris Raffegal, one of your neighbors, and I talked about that problem. And I think they potentially tried to address that in the traffic safety report. We're going to pull that off the agenda this evening and take a look at that. I'm not sure that we've got that figured out right yet.
Thank you. I agree you don't.
And then, and then if you, you don't have to stay around for the whole meeting, but this is a topic we're taking up at the end of the meeting this evening, and the city manager and the city engineer are going to talk about what their ideas are. In fact, I suppose we could talk about it now. We can do it now. Because she's still here, so you don't have to tune in and
That would be nice.
and wait until 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night to hear. So if you want to just sit down and we'll, we'll talk about this issue right now, because we've got.
Well, thank you for coming to our neighborhood and seeing firsthand, and thank you for listening to me.
They've got some ideas, and I don't know if we're all on the same page yet, but I understand your issue, and we're thinking about the watering that you've all done, too. And it's going to be pretty easy, I think, to at least have a conversation with the council about how, if we wanted to do something to help you on the water bill, determining what your historic use was compared to what it's been during this period is pretty simple.
Yep.
So we'll talk about that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so stand by, and we'll get to this. Let's see if anybody else wants to address the council that's in chambers. All right, and then let's go online to see if anybody is waiting to speak to the council on community comment.
I do not have anyone on the line, sir.
Okay, let's, let's talk about this issue. I don't know if Director Milner wants to take this.
He does.
Or Manager Neil wants to go first.
I mean, you know, our, our normal practice when we, when we take community comment is we don't generally respond, because we want to have time to prepare and give an accurate, fully accurate response. In this case, I think we were safe to anticipate that this question would be raised tonight, so we did. And I talked to, to Director Milner earlier today, and he's going to give some background and also talk to you a little bit about the plan and the communication steps that have taken place already.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Members of council definitely prepared to answer the questions this evening. I think first apologizing to the neighborhood, you know, we're sorry of the outcome from the contractor. They have not met the requirements we put forth for that north half of the project. South half of the project looked great. It looks like it's been sodded, and what they did for that definitely turned out. So I want to just emphasize that we do have a contract with the contractor. We don't tell them means and methods. We tell them outcomes. So the contractor chose not to do dormant seeding last fall. They said they would be back out bright and early in May. They did not show up, even though repeated communications. They had labor issues, material issues, equipment issues. They had excuses. So they did not get out there till late June, late or early July to do the seeding. Well, that is totally outside the, the window of when seeding should be done, but they thought they'd try it anyway to see if the summer would be a little wetter, and they would probably have the results that they were hoping for. Well, hope doesn't get us to turf. That's acceptable. So we're continuing to manage the contractor to the contract. We did have discussions with the city attorney that were close to that level where we could say that they're in breach of contract, but we feel like this is no additional cost right now on us. It's no additional cost to the residents. We still have a window where they could address the weeds and, and do the seeding in that window that's recommended at late August. So in my opinion, we should let them do the plan. They put together a plan. We had a third party come out and review it this week, actually last week. Landscape architect with a degree in turf management came out and said, yep, I see the situation. We told them the story of what has happened thus far. We showed them the plan, and, and he agrees, like, it should get grass to the acceptable levels by, by late fall if you follow that plan. So we're confident that not only the contractor understands what needs to be done, this third-party review also has done that. I know there's been discussion about sod. Sod's not in the contract. So if we decided to go to sod, we'd have to tell the contractor to, you're, you're no longer wanted on the project. We'd have to go for bids, and we estimate it's over half a million dollars to come in now and re-sod, because we have to remove two inches of topsoil. We're most likely going to damage the irrigation systems, dog fences, and have to redo all that work. So again, it's not a cost right now to manage the contract and contractor and have them continue to do this. This was a similar situation we saw in 2016 in Strackhawer. It was a drought year. Weeds were this tall. I was doing the same discussion with the council. We showed pictures. In fact, we showed pictures before and after there, and they did this operation, similar operation, and the turf did respond by that fall and next spring. But I think the key is turf takes, whether it's sod or seed, two to three years. We need the residents, like Ruth, watering years from now to keep establishing that turf. We're going to get it to a point where it's growing. They need to continue that management, weed management and watering in the future. We know if we do sod, 30% of the lots, if there's a drought, it's dead. It's gone, and it's completely brown, because we know 30% of the people do not have irrigation systems, so we have a concern on that. We are doing research right now to come back to you this fall to see if, from a sustainability standpoint, from our climate action goals, from, from the triple bottom line, when we look at societal impacts of all the stuff we've been dealing with, with emails and staff time and all that, maybe it makes sense to do sod. So we're trying to get our hands around that again. We were up here in 2016 talking about it. So we're six years from there, and let's see what new research is out there and come forward. To answer some of the questions that Ruth had, the reason Hanson isn't done and 56th, CP Rail. We have been trying to get a permit from CP Rail for 18 months, and we finally got it two weeks ago. So that issue, we wanted to do it. We couldn't do it. They wouldn't give us a permit, and they had just been a blackhole trying to communicate with, but we finally have it. Contractor's coming in in September is going to finish the road. We still don't know when they're going to do the crossing, because they do that work themselves. So the project will be complete this fall, but it was CP Rail delaying that one portion of, of the project there. So I think I answered most of it, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just one, one additional point that she made that we have had some discussion on, and that is how we handle excessive watering. Because we are, and we do need to engage homeowners to help us with this, with kind of the finishing product here, we have been talking to our utility staff about how do we accomplish this. And we can accomplish it, but it's probably setting up, we need to set up some parameters about what time period we're talking about and what percentage of water use we want to discount. And, and so we do want to put some thought into that, so that we're not a moving target on that. We want to be able to produce a message that we can explain to different residents throughout the project areas.
Correct.
So we are working on that.
Yep, and we've done some calculations. If they water every day for this size, how much water, looking at the thing and just coming up with some, some draft numbers at this point, but we'll come back later in the fall when we understand the full extent of, of the watering need here for the rest of the year.
Okay. Ms. Metzger, can you move over a little bit so I can see you from the dais? Is I, yeah, there, move up in that front row, or, there you go. Thanks. So here's, from having been out there and walking the neighborhood, here are my additional concerns. So, and let's get this straight in my mind and everybody else's mind. You're, you're going to kill the weeds. The contractor is going to kill all that existing weed material.
Correct. It's already, you can go out there and see, it's already starting to dry.
All right, so that's a 21-day proposition, as I understand it. And then you're going to till the soil and make it, create a condition where it can theoretically accept hydroseeding again? Is that what we're going to do?
There's various states. Some properties have better seed growth already, so we don't want to destroy the existing grass. So it might be a raking operation versus a tilling operation. So we're going to look at the property and decide what's the best avenue. But yes, we're going to get it ready for seed, and then it's going to be a hydroseed with a, with a fertilizer, liquid fertilizer in there, and organics and the seed mix and blowing that out into the thing, similar to what they did last year, and the results were great. So that's what we want to do again on the north half, the results we got on the south half.
All right. I like that customization idea, because when I was out there, a lot of people have been, had taken it on themselves and spent countless hours working in their yard to try to, you know, reseeding, watering on their own. Some people have put in sod. I think we need to be mindful of that and think about that as a potential reimbursable cost. It, it's, for me, from being out there an hour and a half or so and talking to folks, it's on us now, and we got, we got a contract, right?
Yep.
But for me, the buck stops here, and we got to do it right. And so when you go to reseed, that's another 21 days. So we're going to be at the end of September.
Correct.
Before we know whether we got any grass.
Yep.
And so what happens then if we don't get the kind of catch on the grass that we want? We don't get the kind of germination we want?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, it's no additional cost to the contract. So let's, and I don't think we can get anybody to sod this year anymore, anyway, labor and materials and everything. So let's try it at no cost and review it before winter, right? We want to get documentation of what's out there before winter and see the germination rates and the quality of it. We'll broadcast that to the neighborhood and say, we think these are adequate starting points, and then we look again in the, in the spring and see where it's at at that point.
All right.
And determine if it's, if it's good, or if it, if it look, I don't see how it can look like it does now. But maybe there's a few spots that need another additional blast of hydroseed or something like that.
So I don't have a lot of confidence that the contractor is going to keep that new material moist to allow it to, its best chance of germinating. So are you suggesting that residents water their own?
Yes, we are. We're putting that in our flyers. We really need their help here, and that's why we'll consider the water bill.
And then we'll look at, we'll look at water bill issues. And I think we should think about the same thing for people that bought multiple bags of seed, and if they can produce receipts, we ought to be thinking about things that allow us to reimburse them for some of the, labor would be a tough thing, I think, you know, but some of those hard costs could be, could be reimbursable.
We're even thinking of buying hoses, sprinklers, and this, because for the amount of time and effort we've spent just managing this thing, we could have bought enough for everybody, put them on timers, and been done with it, got them a reduction on their water bill, taking the equipment back for the next year's project. So we're looking at some potential mechanism like that, where, where we give them the tools to do it, and if they don't use it then, that's a different story, because we know.
Ms. Metzger, come on back up, because I want to make sure we got every issue covered here.
Mayor, you saw my yard. You saw what I need to water. I would like to be the pilot for that temporary above-ground irrigation system with timers. I also want to be able to take a vacation, which I haven't done at all this year. So yes, I would definitely like to be the pilot, and I think my yard would be a good case, because it's a mixture of shade, sun, corner, high traffic.
Yep, okay. And then we'll talk about this parking issue and the inability to make the turn, too.
Pardon?
We'll talk about the parking issues later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for coming in tonight. All right. We don't have anything else from community comment standpoint. So the usual practice, as, as Manager Neil said, is to respond to community comments from the prior meeting. Manager Neil, anything that you need to respond to?
Yes, sir. We had a resident last, at our July 19 meeting, who talked about this topic and, and encouraged us to take it on. So that was something we have done since then. Arnie Bigby was here and thanked the council for the support of the Juneteenth holiday and talked about that a bit. We had a question about the status of the replacement of the pedestrian bridge over the crosstown. We received, the mayor received a response earlier this week from MINDOT that they have awarded a contract for the steelwork, for the structural work of the, of the metal that supports the bridge, to fix the bridge, but not to replace the bridge. So we do know that is going forward, and there was a question about the status of Fire Station 3, what progress report, and we don't have any status or we don't have any progress to report on Station 3. We are still working very much on Station 2 and trying to get that project up and going. And you're going to take an action, I think, later tonight that helps get that project moving forward still. So that's what we had last time.
Good. Any questions from council members as a result of that report? All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. We've got two items that council members have said we wanted to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion. It's 6N, as in Nancy, and O. Anything else any council members want to remove from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items N and O?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, Member Anderson, second, see adoption of the consent agenda with the exception of items 6N and 6O. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda except for 6N and 6O, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carried. And the reason I pulled the traffic safety report, that'll sidebar with Member Staunton, and this relates to what Ms. Metzger was talking about. I wasn't sure that we got this right over there yet on, on Dale in terms of the, of the parking. And I don't know if anybody can opine on that or not. And let me find the item here.
Mayor, I can, I can speak to that.
Yeah, thank you.
Page three.
So, Mayor, members of council, we had a traffic safety request, and the request was for concerns with parking on 56th Street.
Right.
So we made, the committee made that change. You can see we're adding a no parking sign between the driveway and that corner on 56th. The situation that was brought up this evening, that wasn't part of the request. So I'm going to go back, and we'll review that situation on Dale Street.
On Dale.
And maybe we have an amendment, but at least we're going to put the no parking here now, and maybe there's additional stuff that happened, has to happen on Dale. So that wasn't part of the original request.
Yeah, I think the, the email I received talked about the whole block between, I think, Dale and Hanson on 56th, that it wasn't good enough just to do part of the block. So as you go back to look at that, maybe that has to do with what Ms. Metzger was talking about.
Yeah, I'll look at the turning movements, the, between Dale and Hanson, it was narrowed for the sidewalk. So there's no parking on that section, but then there's this parking issue right at Dale. So we'll look at that.
All right, okay.
So we know we have addressed at least that one car that's parking on 56th.
Okay.
When we put the sign up.
Right. I don't know why they don't park in the driveway at the group home, but they park on Dale, and they park in a way where it really creates difficulty with the narrowness of the street and the curve. So I think on either side of Dale, you got to look at it.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay, all right. Having provided that information, thank you, Director Milner. Anybody care to move the adoption of the traffic safety report of June 28, 2022, which was item 6N?
Still moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by a Member Jackson, to adopt item 6N, which is the approval of the traffic safety report of June 28, 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carried. And then O deals with a request that we've had regarding joining a fencing consortium, a joint powers agreement, potential joint powers agreement, and a turn to Member Staunton.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Chief, welcome. I, I just wanted to pull this off. We had a very good discussion at our meeting, at our work session on the 19th of July about this, and, and I understand that this is an insurance policy of sorts, and the place that I got, I was somewhat uncomfortable. I'm not a big fan of fences, but, but I'm, I'm persuaded that I'm okay with this, provided that, that we add a policy that says that the council's going to make the decision about deploying this whenever that comes up, because I think it's up to our staff to do, to make the suggestions about the options for us, but it's up to us to make the decision about how much protection we need and when we need it. And so, so that's, that's the one reason I wanted to raise it. I don't know if, if, Chief, if you want to add anything, but it's, that's, that's all I just wanted to raise it, to make sure. And we don't have to do that now. We can do a policy as we agree to move on with the joint powers agreement, so.
Member Jackson.
So just so I'm clear, we would have a policy as to when it would be put up and taken down, as opposed to having to call us all and say, is it okay if we put it up?
No.
Yeah.
I don't think so. No, the policy would be to call us all and say, is it okay to put it up?
Okay, oh, that's why I asked. Okay, okay, great.
I'm sorry. I wasn't very clear about that.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
That was, I mean, the discussion we had at the work session was, was just over, you know, who makes the call about these important kind of decisions. And, you know, as I sit here, I can't imagine a situation where we need to use it, but that's also why we need to have it, is because maybe there'll be things we can't imagine. And eight years ago, there were a lot of things that I couldn't imagine would happen in the next eight years that have already happened. So, so I'm, I'm, I understand the need to prepare and to be ready, but I also want to make sure that this council or future councils makes the call about whether to deploy that kind of measure. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I know that, that Councilmember Staunton and Anderson and the mayor were present during 2020, when we were having regular emergency meetings of the council, closed sessions of the council. So we have some experience about how to do that, how to call you together quickly, present, you know, a recommendation to the council and getting action on it. And that's, that's what we envisioned could happen here. I think the kinds of events that would cause us to assess the threat level of rioters, not protesters, but people rioting and, and kind of bent on destruction of this building or other buildings here, we, we have some pre, you know, pre-advanced notice that that might happen, right? We, we know an event happened, and we can draw a logical conclusion that that's a risk, and, and maybe we even have intelligence that that's a risk, and we would present that to you. We'd hope that you would acknowledge and endorse it, and we'd be off to the, you know, off to the JP, off to the JPA with the fence request, but.
Member Pierce. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I assume that that is just an operating principles that we would outline, is maybe how I would say it. But I think we should, because of the conversation that we had, and I felt like we ended in a great spot, I think we should discuss that and just outline, here is the process that we will use. Because the other question I asked, and I don't think I saw that in the documentation, is that it's a consortium, and so the way we talked about it, it felt like we were still petitioning to the consortium that we need fencing. And there was still some play in terms of how that decision gets made if other communities need it fencing as well, because we're not buying, we're not, there's not going to be enough fencing for all the communities. And so just some of those nuances, I think if, I would feel more comfortable if we had that outlined, this is how we would, this is the agreement and how it gets, and how it gets executed. And then add to that, these are the principles around how we as an Edina would decide when to deploy. when to deploy.
Chief, you comment on that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor and council members. First and foremost, I agree with the comments made here before us. I think it is good practice from a policy decision-making process and to get in front of our elected officials to have those very specific conversations if we should ever have an event like that. So I'm in agreement with that. And then I think I would offer that we'd look at this as phase one as part of the planning. And so we're simply saying that we're going to commit to this and get involved with the JPA. But there's a phase two to come after this. And when this board is developed out, those are the exact issues that they're going to work through over the next several months, which is the definition of what an event would look like, hopefully, and we think this will happen, to extend the length of the fencing and potentially get into a situation where they might buy the fencing, so that'll take care of those kinds of issues that could come forward down the road for us. So I believe that everything will get established over time. And I do believe it would be fairly easy for us to put some parameters around some kind of a policy decision-making process or put that forward before this council.
Your Honor. Manager Neil and then Member Anderson.
I think in response to Council Member Pierce's questions and concerns, what we're asking for is to be, is for your authorization to be at the table so that we can help form and answer some of those questions. Because some of those questions are answered only by the JPA itself. And those are the logistical tactical questions about how much fence do we buy and who gets it if it's, if there's more than two cities that need it and those sorts of questions. If we're at the table, we can help shape that policy. If we're not at the table, if we can't commit to join the JPA, they don't want us at the table. That's what I would say. The rest of it, though, about what triggers a DINA to ask for it, that question is clearly decided at this, in this room, right? And that's part of what, that's part of what I think you're asking for tonight, is for us to prepare some policy language that you would approve and that would, that would control how we submit a request to get this fence in the first place.
And Chief, you'd like to see us approve that resolution 2022-66 tonight so that we could get, you know, we could become part of the JPA and then we can have this subsequent discussion internally about how we're going to handle it on the DINA end.
Mr. Mayor, I would, we are under a deadline and we have to get this completed by September 1st.
Okay, right. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions, Chief. We don't have access to this fencing and I don't know where it's been used elsewhere. Do you have any idea of if, as we develop a policy, what's the timeline, do you think, in terms of requesting fencing, having it in place and on site?
Sure. So currently, the situation that we're dealt with is that there is not a vendor locally for us to call into play. And so that would take probably at least a day or two to get a fence solution in place if we should need it. What this JPA and this consortium would do for us is allow for a fencing solution to be stored locally here in the metro area and provide that within hours should the call go in.
I'm sorry, how many hours did you say?
Two to three hours.
Two to three?
Yeah.
Okay. And so what you, I think in our last meeting, the work session, I think you stated basically the Schuman line, the blue line, is good for about two hours in the face of that type of event.
That's correct. Officers that are holding a line in a situation like that, there's limited capacity and time to establish that and to do that for sustained periods of time. And so a fence solution is the optimal way to set up a safety perimeter around any kind of a building or establish for a government entity such as this. And that is highly recommended based on experience that we've seen here locally.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And so just in going forward as we discuss policy on that, then I think what we're going to have to determine is what our timeline would be in terms of gathering and how we gauge that event. And that becomes important in the unlikely and hopefully never experienced situation where we might consider erecting that fencing. It's a calamitous type of event. We don't really like to consider it. It's, we don't, we don't, we don't like to think that's going to happen here. But as we buy this insurance policy, then we recognize the possibility that that can happen. And so if that were to occur, timing is going to be very important in that. So I just, I just encourage as we consider policy that we consider that timing and how we implement. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Neil, I think you made a good distinction here, the notion being that if we're facing a riot situation, that's one thing, if it's peaceful protesters like we had, I believe it was October of 16, in the council chambers, and Member Staunton and I, was it 16 or 18?
16.
16. That that's a totally different situation and appropriate for them to have their voice heard, so. All right. Anything else that you wanted?
I think we've covered everything while here tonight.
Officer Kuski, anything you want to add?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, all right, thank you. Member Staunton, you want to move that matter?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll move. Item, is it 6O?
Correct. That's correct. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt 6O. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2022-66, which is item 6O on our agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, that completes matters on the consent agenda and the items removed therefrom. We've got one public hearing matter this evening, and that is the potential suspension of a liquor license involving a restaurant operation in our town called People's Organic. And I'm going to turn now to Sharon Allison, our city clerk. And we've got Lieutenant Dan Convoy with us this evening to answer any questions. But first, it's Clark Allison's obligation on the way we do business to talk about this potential liquor license violation and potential suspension.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council members, compliance checks are done twice annually by our police department to make sure that establishments are not selling tobacco as well as alcohol to underage individuals. Most recently, in June, the compliance check was done and there were five violations, one tobacco by BP Unburnin, and four alcohol, Buffalo Wild Wings, Lifetime, and Wooden Hills. Those three establishments, it was their first offense. And so they had the right to waive an opportunity to attend a public hearing and pay the $500 fine, which they did. For the next offender, People's Organic, this is their second violation in 24 months. And so they are required to, we are required to hold a public hearing based on state statute. The recommended penalty based on our ordinance is a three-day liquor license suspension as well as a $1,000 fine. Staff recommends that we, that the council approve their suspension to be Monday through Wednesday, August 8th through the 10th, as well as the $1,000 fine. Lieutenant Convoy is here and is available to answer any questions that you may have regarding the compliance checks. And People's Organic's owner, Jewel Roberts, is also in attendance and is more than willing to answer any questions that you may have for her. And with that, I will stand for any questions that you may have for me.
All right. Questions for Clark Allison or for Lieutenant Convoy? Lieutenant Convoy, did you have anything you wanted to add before we?
No, Mayor.
One of the questions? Okay. Questions?
I just, I just noticed that we did get an email from the server. Is that part of the record this evening?
I'm not sure I understand you when you said the server.
Well, the person who served the underage person.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that. I can't respond to that because I'm not aware of that email.
So maybe we should make it part of the record tonight, but I don't have a copy with me.
I don't either.
It was an email from the individual who did the serving, who was explaining her mistake and that she, she was taking responsibility for having kind of messed up and just wanted us to know that she didn't think it was a lack of training, she thought it was a lack of her attention to detail at that time, so.
I believe Ms. Roberts is going to talk with you about the training too that is given to the staff at People's Organic.
Great, thanks.
All right. But for the server, I mean, they get charged as well, as I recall, with a, is it a gross misdemeanor?
Yes, the server was issued a citation that evening for a gross misdemeanor, for serving underage.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from council members?
One of my questions, Mr. Mayor, is have we ever seen anything like this before?
Yes.
Okay. Can, I guess I'd like to hear a little more context because it, based on the letter, it sounded like an error in math by the server. And I guess if I had some context as to other situations that we've seen, maybe just even one story where we've seen that before, I'd appreciate that.
Well, I think from a context standpoint, Lieutenant Convoy or Clerk Allison, you might tell about how we go about doing that, those checks. Because my recollection is that we basically tell them, we're coming. We tell them a week or two or three in advance, we're coming to your facility with an underage person and we're going to check to see if you're in compliance. Lieutenant Convoy?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. In this case, I believe it was probably about 10 days, maybe even less, prior that we sent out notification to every liquor establishment, including city liquor stores, restaurants, bars, saying that we will be doing compliance checks. And the process is, we have two undercover plainclothes officers that bring generally one of our police explorers who's underage. And they all, for example, they'll all go into a restaurant and either sit at a table or go up to the bar. They'll have the explorer, who's the underage decoy, order a drink, and then they kind of wait to see what happens. If, in this case, I believe the underage decoy did provide an ID, a real ID showing that he was underage, and the server, kind of like you said, didn't do the math right or didn't read on top of it saying that the person was under 21. So that's when the plainclothes officers identify themselves. Mostly, the servers are catching that the decoy's underage or, some cases, they don't even ask for ID. And in the same instance, our undercover officers will identify themselves and explain what's happening.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought my recollection was that if you're under 21, your driver's license is a different color.
It's possible. I probably should be more up to date on the driver's license, what they look like, but I haven't worked patrol in quite a long time. But they will say that the person is under 21 on it.
I won't make that assumption that in the case of this matter, we'll hear what Ms. Roberts has to say from People's Organic.
We're just talking, we make up.
Age drivers at home, so.
They're not a different color, but there's a large bar at the top that clearly says under 21.
You don't have to do math to do.
That was the point I was going to get to, is you don't have to do math if someone's under 21.
It's true.
All right. Ms. Roberts, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Juella Roberts. I'm the owner of People's Organic, along with my husband. So I was coming just to talk a little bit about training. I know Katie sent in a message. We got your letter. We actually did the full staff. We do training twice a year. It was not even 30 days prior that we did a staff training on carding IDs and we, it was a wine tasting slash carding IDs meeting. So they had just been trained on it. We, you know, years ago, we had gotten cited. We've been around for, going on 12 years here. And since then, I've always taken a ton of precautions because I never wanted something like this to happen. So at every register, we have three registers, and there is the little signs with the date and the year that you flip off. And then we have the letter that you gave, which I posted on the board where everyone, you walk by it every day and you see it when you punch in. And I texted out to everyone, like, hey, they're coming, show them you can do it, you know, everything. So she, she knew. She knew they were coming. She called me crying when it happened. She was, you know, she was hysterical about it. And what she said to me is that she looked at the 23 and for some reason, you know, she was thinking, you're 22. And then she added it versus minusing. So she said it was an error. However, and I didn't say this to her at the time because I was kind of putting salt on a wound because she was very upset about it, but it does say under 21, the IDs do. So there is that. I don't think as a company, we don't train them. We very much do and we do take it seriously. But she did make the mistake. And I, you know, that's kind of where it is. But she did have all the tools, they, I should, all of them have all the tools to do it right. And we definitely, we have, we have some people who get annoyed with us because we have a card everyone policy. And so it just, it doesn't matter who it is, if you order, you card, if you've ever dined with us before, during the day you order at the register and then you sit down, if someone is giving you your wine or beer at the table after you order, because we bring everything out, we card again. Because we got, actually, that was the one that we got years ago, was that someone brought it out and they stuck it in front of the wrong person, you know, the person. And so, but anyways, we take it seriously. Katie just made a mistake. She's great otherwise, though. And it was the end of the night. She had, if you read the letter, it's kind of a long ramble, but as I am doing right now.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Clerk Allison, what are our options here with respect to the potential three-day liquor license suspension and the extent of the fine? Is it mandatory or do we have flexibility in that regard?
Well, the state statute does say that you can go up to 60 days or a $2,000 fine. In our ordinance, it is a presumptive penalty and the next phase is a three-day suspension.
Okay, that's right. We've got, we've got that presumptive penalty chart.
We have a matrix.
Right, exactly.
The matrix that we follow. Right, that we've had in place for several years.
Yep.
Right.
Member Jackson, that help at all or?
Oh, I'm a big believer in human error, that we all make mistakes and it just seems, I don't know how to reconcile this. It was a stupid mistake and I've made stupid mistakes and I don't know. I think it sounds like, and we have evidence that there's training and everything, it seems like a pretty severe penalty for a stupid mistake. So I just, I'm not understanding what the presumptive penalty, if that means that it's not, it can't be altered. I don't understand that standard.
Manager Neil.
Well, it's a, when we've had these happen before, council asked staff to put together the matrix of how can we apply a more, a more standard kind of set of penalties given certain circumstances? So that's where it came from. It came from council and we apply it to violations such as this. And there's heavier penalties if there's future violations at the same license holder.
Just like this one is heavier than the other three that you identified tonight.
That's right.
Because this is the second in 24 months.
And the, actually, the more onerous criminal burden, if you will, falls on the server getting a gross misdemeanor. And this is mild comparing of a gross misdemeanor on your record, which is really a tragedy. But, you know, that's an issue that the server's going to have to deal with, whether they hire a council or not, I don't know.
Well, that helps me understand.
I think it's, we don't like it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it helps to just put it in context. It is, yeah.
And as I can tell you from being involved in maybe a handful of these over the years, the stories are quite similar.
Okay.
You know, somebody made a mistake, but we've always followed the matrix. That's why we put it together, to try to give people an opportunity to cure themselves. And then you had this second offense within 24 months. And as Clerk Allison points out, we could be a lot more draconian, if you will, we could be a lot more harsh under the state statute than we've chosen to be by creating that matrix, so. And then I can see in the recommendation that Clerk Allison and Lieutenant Convoy are making, they're trying to pick days of the week in sequence that maybe are later from a business standpoint to try to minimize the impact. But nonetheless, it's a violation.
Yeah. It helps to hear it in context.
Okay. Ms. Roberts, I really want to thank you for coming in.
If I may add, Mr. Mayor, to what Council Member Jackson is saying, so there is a third level and then there is a, so this is a first, second, third, and a fourth level. The fourth level is revocation. And that's where the council does have some flexibility in taking a look at the business over the years. And you could decide if you should revoke the license or allow them to keep their license. But at this point, to make it fair for everyone, it's best to.
Follow the matrix.
Follow the matrix, yes.
You get that uniform treatment of other people that have been similarly situated.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Ms. Roberts, thank you for coming in. It was good. It was good of you to do so.
Of course.
So we've got a recommendation from our city clerk, and Lieutenant Conboy was here for questions and to provide some detail around the activity of our underage person. Is there a motion to approve people... Oh, wait a minute. This is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Hold on. Thank you for testifying. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this matter? Director Benarot, do we have anybody online that's waiting to testify?
I don't have anyone right now, but because it's been less than a minute since you actually called for testimony, I would wait for a minute before moving on, giving people time to call in, because there is a slight delay in the broadcast. My clock shows that it's 7:53, so I'll come back to it 7:54, or when I have a caller, whichever is first. I think it's safe for you to move forward with your agenda.
All right. Thank you, Director Benarot. Is there a motion to close the public hearing matter with respect to the potential liquor license suspension, People's Organic's liquor license?
So moved.
Second.
We had a motion, second, to close the public hearing with regard to this matter. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And now we have in front of us a recommended motion from our staff. These are tough. We don't like to see them either. When I see them on the agenda, I think, oh, boy. And then you've got a great operator like People's Organic, that everybody in our community loves so much from a restaurant standpoint, and a kind of place to hang out and have a good meal, and a cup of coffee. But nonetheless, we face this difficult situation based on the facts involved. Is there a motion to approve People's Organic's three-day liquor license suspension for the period, what was it, August?
Eight through the 10th.
Eight through the 10th. And impose a $1,000 fine for their second liquor license violation within 24 months.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Anderson, to approve the liquor license suspension for three days for People's Organic. The days would be the 8th through the 10th of August 2022. And impose a $1,000 fine for their second liquor license violation within 24 months. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Sorry.
Thanks for your time.
That concludes our public hearing portion of the agenda. Next is, under item 8A, resolution accepting donations. And as has been our practice, we've carved out one that's really quite distinct from some that we see from time to time. But the first matter is Resolution 2022-71, which is, I believe, a bench donation. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-71?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to adopt Resolution 2022-71, which would accept donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of that resolution, 2022-71, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And this is to the Park and Rec Department. Jerry Albrecht from our community, $3,200 for a bench at Centennial Lakes, I'm sure a memorial bench. So Jerry Albrecht, thank you very much. And then we're going to go back to the next resolution, which involves a potential donation or accepting a donation. 2022-67 would involve accepting a donation from one of our residents, Brigadier General Retired Dennis W. Schulstedt. And I'm going to have, do you want staff to come forward with, want everybody to come up? Mr. General Schulstedt, Tiffany?
Yes, sir.
Want to come up to the... Do you have a presentation? Do you have anything that we can...
Well, we can, we can tell you...
See, as a prematurity, you have...
Yeah, we can certainly tell you about it. Tiffany Bushland, General Manager at Centennial Lakes Park, honored to be here tonight with Dennis Schulstedt, who is donating $25,000 for a bronze statue in honor of his late wife. It'll be a beautiful statue and enhanced landscaping at Centennial Lakes Park that we're proud to accept and honored to accept. Anything that you'd like to say?
Oh, I'm just... Pam and our golden retriever walked around that lake on hundreds of occasions. It's really a jewel for the city of Edina. And so I want to publicly thank the mayor, Scott. We had a meeting to talk about what we can do to remember Pam and to make Centennial Lakes even better. And then Tiffany came along with some terrific ideas. And so it'll be a life-size bronze statue of a golden retriever with his hand up, so kids can shake his hand and enjoy that marvelous facility at Centennial Lakes. So thank you very much for your support.
Well, thank you. Are you still thinking about that same location, Tiffany?
Yes.
Over near the office park on that little outcropping?
Yes, that's correct. So the statue will go in the south side of the park, near the office park. It'll be kitty corner of the Circle of Fish artwork. So it'll be a great visual location for it.
And Denny was good enough to send out, Nick Legaros from our community, the sculptor, is working on the golden retriever. And they sent a clay mock-up picture for us to look at, and it's, when it's finished, it's going to be fantastic. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-67, accepting a donation from Dennis W. Schulstedt of our community for a bronze statue commemorating his wife and their golden retriever, an upgraded landscaping at Centennial Lakes Park valued at $25,000?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Jackson, to approve that resolution as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-67, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Now, we're going to move on to something that we started talking about at our prior meeting, and that is the adoption of a potential interim ordinance prohibiting the sale, testing, and manufacturing and distribution of THC products. We know there's been a lot of conversation around this legalization of this product. At the state legislature, we've been advised by council that we could, on an interim basis, have an ordinance that would prohibit the sale, testing, and manufacturing and distribution of THC products. Manager Neal and our city attorney, David Kendall, have been working very diligently on this matter for us and for our community. So I'm going to turn now to Manager Neal and Attorney Kendall. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll start the presentation. As we discussed last time, what we're asking you to do is to adopt an interim ordinance, a moratorium on the retail sale of these products in the community. This gives us the opportunity to put together, to do some research, and also then to prepare a regulatory structure that includes the various phases of how you regulate a new product like this in the community. We have already started that process. Mr. Kendall has been working on that ordinance. It's our plan to share the regulatory ordinance with you for kind of a first run at the next meeting, at the next council meeting in August.
Very good.
The interim ordinance moratorium is for 12 months. That's as long as you are allowed by state statute to have an interim ordinance or a moratorium. You would have the chance to eliminate that moratorium once you have a regulatory structure in place that you have confidence in.
All right. Good. Questions for Manager Neal? I know we've been visiting about this for some time. Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question on, we talked about this, I think, the last time as well. In fact, I think Member Staunton asked, or made the point, that moratoriums, they typically don't go 12 months. And so can you speak to, can you speak to that regarding this, in terms of the work that you're already doing, and how quickly we think that we could come to some resolution there?
Yeah. Councilmember Pierce, members of council, yes, I can speak to that. We had a meeting...
Yesterday?
Yesterday morning with Mr. Kendall and a number of our regulatory staff that would be involved, so the police department, community health, city clerk. We, to just discuss how we could put this together. We will be using the city's existing tobacco control ordinance as the model to do this. As I said, we're going to present the first draft of that ordinance to you at the August 16 council meeting. Let's say it has two readings. If it goes through council review at kind of the fastest pace, you know, this could be, you could be considering the elimination of the moratorium in October.
Thank you. One of the other reasons I asked that question, I did have a conversation with a resident. And I have been clear that we don't expect this to be 12 months. We've also done some research that shows that we don't currently have vendors in the city that are selling these products. And so this one conversation I had, the president did make the point that they are using these products, and they go to Richfield or other communities, or they're ordering online. And so I do think we don't want to stand in the way of other businesses, potentially in Edina, deciding to provide this benefit to our residents. And so as we can, as expeditiously as possible, get through the process so that we have a good regulatory process in place to protect residents as well, I would advocate for that. Thank you.
Thanks for that question, and those comments. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a comment.
Please.
So my concern was, when this first came out, it was a pretty, the information about it was all about, as you guys spoke about it at the last meeting, making something that's in a gray area much safer. And that's a really important thing. My concern was that there was no criminal penalty for underage sales. And the first materials that came out on this didn't address it. The enforcement didn't talk about that. Since then, the League of Minnesota Cities has come out saying that in the chapter that this is a part of, there is a criminal penalty for violations. And that was really important to me. I didn't want to criminalize something that had been decriminalized by the state, but there's a criminal penalty for sales for under 21. So that was my primary concern, because we do want to make sure that this is done safely. And so I echo Member Pierce's comments. We want to see this happen fairly quickly, but we want to make sure that our minors in Edina are safe. And I want to encourage the state to put a tax on this as well, just like tobacco and alcohol. So, thank you.
Can we impose a local tax?
I don't know.
Member Jackson might be around the number of...
We haven't talked about that.
I don't think you can do that, Mr. Mayor. I can look into that if you like, but I don't want to. All right. Well, there was a good idea dashed quickly.
Sorry.
Sorry. All right. Any other questions from council members? Comment from Manager Neal?
Nothing more from you.
Attorney Kendall? You feel comfortable that we can do this? Otherwise, you wouldn't have gone to the work you did, I'm sure.
Mr. Mayor, I feel comfortable, and also, we're well underway trying to draft a licensing ordinance. And so we'll get that back to you as soon as possible, if that's what you're looking for next.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-06, which is an interim ordinance prohibiting the sale, testing, manufacturing, and distribution of THC products, and waive second reading? Is that what you prefer?
So moved. This is the second reading.
This is the second reading.
This is the second reading.
This is the second reading? Okay. And grant second reading, I guess that's more appropriate then. All right. Very good. We got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce?
Second.
Thank you. And any further discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the motion 2022-06 as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And then, of course, we've got to publish this. And Clerk Allison, do you want to comment about the summary publication of this matter?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor. State statute allows us to publish a summary of a lengthy ordinance, and this ordinance would fit into that category. And you are required to approve the summary publication.
All right. Very good. Any questions for Clerk Allison? Is there a motion to approve the summary publication for ordinance number 2022-06, which was an interim ordinance, of course, that you just approved, prohibiting the sale, testing, manufacturing, and distribution of THC products?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Anderson seconds. The motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the motion to approve the summary publication for ordinance 2022-06, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And now we're going to talk about a bond sale that's taken place. I'm going to turn to Manager Neal, and we've got Nick Anhut, our senior municipal advisor from Ellers with us. And then we've got Alicia McAndrews, our finance director, available virtually. But I'm going to turn to Manager Neal, and then I'm sure we're all waiting to hear what Mr. Anhut has to say about who bid on our bonds and what was the rate.
Who is the lucky winner? All right? That's what we want to know. Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. This item is in front of you tonight because it is part of a city initiative to build a new fire station, Fire Station Number Two. We had previously, staff had previously recommended to the city council this particular site at 4404 West 76th Street, I believe. We had negotiated an initial purchase agreement to acquire the site. What's in front of you tonight is a bond sale that will finance not only the sale, the purchase of that property, but also the clearance of that property and the initial design work on the fire station. And with that, I can turn it over to Mr. Anhut.
All right. Mr. Anhut, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Manager Neal. Nick Anhut with Ellers &amp; Associates, financial advisors to the city of Edina. And I'm happy to present some favorable results that we received on your behalf this morning. So as Manager Neal mentioned, there was a public hearing that was held back in June by this body that preliminarily approved up to $39 million worth of financing to fund this project. This proposed bond issue here is interim financing to acquire the site and initiate the initial design of that project, with the intention that permanent financing of that $39 million will occur over the course of the next two to two and a half years, as those details unfold. So this issue will mature in the year 2025. There is capitalized interest included to cover interim payments, so there is no need to adjust levies or any budgetary impacts during this interim period. And then we intend to wrap this amount into permanent financing at some point, once we get a clearer picture of the overall cost and budget for the project. I'm happy to say, even though we did initiate these discussions with the last bond issue with the city, both Moody's and S&amp;P did check in with the city staff, hold some discussions, and your bond rating, your AAA bond rating, was affirmed by both of these entities, placing the city among the top of the echelon of all thousands of municipal, city, county, and school districts across the country. You've held these ratings for, in some cases, more than 20 years, and these agencies did not see that this financing or any of the future capital plans that we did share in those discussions placed that rating in jeopardy. And with that, that bond rating at the highest point, it does allow the city to borrow at a very low rate. And so we did receive five bids on behalf of the city this morning, with the winning bid coming from Morgan Stanley out of their New York office, at an indicated interest cost of 2.129%. So that is the applicable interest rate for the borrowing and the associated financing costs associated with this $17 million of borrowing. costs associated with this $17 million of borrowing. We received bids from Citigroup, Baird, Piper Sandler, and Northland Securities, all the way up to just a hair under 2.7%. So over half a percentage point difference between the various bidders, with an interest difference among them of $234,000 from the low to high. As you can see, Morgan Stanley's bid was very favorable comparison to the others that were presented, and we certainly recommend that you move forward and accept this very opportune proposal. With the adoption of the resolution this evening, the council would provide final authorization for $17 million. Those funds will be deposited in the city accounts to pay cost of issuance, capitalize interest over the course of the next two and a half years, and then also facilitate the site acquisition for the new project, as well as some of the initial design work at a calculated true interest cost of 2.129% over the entire period. So I will turn it back for any questions of the council, but we certainly do recommend that you move forward, adopt this resolution, which would award the sale of bonds to Morgan Stanley, reflecting the terms of the lowest proposal that was received in a competitive sale this morning on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Anhut. Questions for Mr. Anhut? Comments from council members? Member Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So my, thanks for the presentation, great result. But I do want to try to learn something here. So why the spread? This is the second time I can remember when there was that kind of spread from the lowest to the highest. And I'm just curious, like, what would drive that? Is there anything we can learn in that? Or is there additional leverage or what have you? So if you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pierce. You know, there's a variety of different factors. Each underwriter or investment broker is going to have their own audience that they're trying to appease, or their own clientele that are going to be pooling the funds to invest in these bonds. I will say, I was surprised a little bit by the magnitude from low to high, not so much the difference on the interim. But this is a single maturity of $17 million that is maturing in 2025. So it's a little bit different from some of the other financing that we've seen in the past with the city where we tend to spread out those payments over a longer duration. So we would expect to see more volatility, less of an audience, if you will, for this type of a transaction. I will also say that with the Fed taking action last week, you know, even though that was a planned and premeditated action to boost interest rates again to combat inflation, we have seen that has created a little bit of volatility as well. And there are some other larger offerings that are coming into the marketplace over the course of the next month. So there are some other bonds that brokers will be lining up for as well. So I think we still got a very favorable result from the winner, but maybe not a consensus amongst the group that this was where they wanted to put their $17 million right now. But I don't know that I would say that there's any lessons we learned for future actions. And this is certainly not a financing that the city intends to do on a routine basis.
Other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Anhut. Always, you've been generally the bearer of very good news, which is what you want to be with the city council, I think.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-70, which would award the sale of $17 million worth of general obligation temporary CIP bonds, Series 2022B to Morgan Stanley and Company LLC?
So moved. Second.
So moved by Member Pierce, second by Member Jackson. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-70, which would award the sale of $17 million in the type of bonds described to Morgan Stanley and Company LLC, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, thank you for being here. This is an unusual one in that terms of the short duration of the borrowing. It's the first time I think I've seen that, but it was quite a good rate for a three-year proposition, really. Okay, and now we're going to go to, we've got a couple of our planning commissioners with us this evening. Our chair, the planning commission, Kay Agnew, is here, and one of her colleagues and longtime planning commissioner, Lou Miranda, are here to tell us about the off-street parking regulation recommendations that are coming from the planning commission. And of course, this is something the council has wrestled with for quite a time, and we keep pushing the responsibility off on the members of the planning commission and say, okay, look at it again, and look at it again. Here we are finally now live, and we get to have a nice conversation with both of you. And so first of all, I'll say, I say thanks for, to both of you, and on behalf of all your colleagues, too, you know, thanks from the council to all of us, to all of you for this good work that you do, not only in this matter, but on all of the things, land use related for the city of Edina. Thanks. All right, go ahead, Chair, Chair Agnew.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having us tonight. So this conversation has been going on for a while between planning commission and the city council on parking in Edina. And so we first presented, I think it was last July, this ordinance for review, and the discussion that came from that was wanting to really understand how this particular ordinance plays into the bigger picture of how we see parking, parking requirements, and just the evolution of parking in Edina. So what we did is we took a couple of steps back, and we wanted to frame up what's our goal? Why are we talking about parking? Why does parking continue to come up? And then wrote in our strategy and kind of our game plan towards that. So we're going to walk through what that plan is, how this ordinance fits into that plan, and then Director Teague will go through the ordinance in more detail. So I definitely want to have a conversation kind of at that high level of what we're thinking from the planning commission about parking, but then also, obviously, here to discuss the ordinance in and of itself. So with that, so when we were thinking about our high-level goals, the first was really sustainability. The use of vehicles requiring a lot of space being dedicated to vehicles obviously has an impact on sustainability. So we were looking at our climate action plan. And I know that there is a report from the city as well of, you know, referring back to the climate action plan actually calling for the elimination of parking minimums. But I think it's really about that tie to sustainability that parking really has, reducing vehicles' miles traveled, increasing transit. So really leaning forward with sustainability is a first goal. Next, it was about equity and affordability of housing. So costly parking mandates are something that really drive up the costs of housing. And so we looked at, you know, are there ways that we can decouple parking from housing to really strive for equity in the housing options that we have, and making sure that we're really meeting the diverse needs of members of our community. Next, we also talked about our local economy. So we really desire walkable community nodes that have, you know, retail, fine dining, community establishments that are bringing people to our community and really creating those areas of, you know, I think of a lot of like 40th, Fourth and France, right? How can we continue to draw people that live in that area into that node and create really walkable communities? And then lastly, we talked a lot about children and kind of, you know, what do we want Edina to become, and what is the role of parking and in traffic in the safety of children? And the one note that I'll kind of bullet point here is reducing congestion. So when you think about areas where parking is sometimes even harder to find, right? And so I'm really thinking here of the phrase right sizing parking. When you have areas where people don't know where to park or parking is hard to find, what happens is you have a lot of cruising. Cruising is, you know, looking around, going around the block three or four times. And so there are a lot of studies that show that the more cruising you have, the more traffic you have on some of these side streets. And so really what we think about is right sizing parking, and it's not so much always necessarily like eliminating parking, right? It's about what do the areas need and how are we meeting what the needs are? So really, that strategy is thinking about how can we tell that story? Reducing costly parking mandates doesn't necessarily mean reducing parking, reducing options. It's really about finding that right sizing. We also want to help tie this overall strategy of what parking will continue down the evolution to be to this bigger picture, right? So rooting in the comprehensive plan, our climate action plan, all of these plans that we have as a city, and how these strategies tie together. We also have multiple steps, which Commissioner Miranda will go through in greater detail. And then we really want to communicate what are the benefits? And I know when we had our work session a couple of months ago, we talked about the idea potentially like a parking benefit district and what that would mean. And I think that there are a lot of really appealing nodes where if we were to, you know, really figure out what's that right size and how could we create a benefit district, there are really ways to use parking as a lever to help bring other things into a specific node that we need, we need to fund, different things like that. So with that, I will hand it over to Commissioner America.
Thank you. So what do we expect? And now that we talked about the strategy for what we want to do for parking, what are the expected results of studying parking? So the first one is collaboration. Parking obviously is a land use problem because it physically takes up space within the city and involves zoning. But also, parking involves cars, and that involves transportation. So collaboration between the planning and transportation commissions, having them work together, it would be kind of necessary in order to really fully study parking. And then what are the results, the plans? And so what we have here is just the beginning, right? And so this is, we're talking about off-street parking ordinances simply because that's what the city council asked us to do. But there are other ways of studying parking, including on-street parking management plan, which if you do change parking, that's something that consultants recommend you look at. And then looking, kind of standing back and taking a big-picture look at transportation of all kinds within the city. So having a citywide transportation plan. We already have a bike and pedestrian plan, but do we need to talk more about transit and cars as part of that transportation within the city? And then finally, in terms of results, I mean, we want to continue Edina being a leader within the community, right? So Edina is an innovator. We do a lot of things that other cities don't do, or we're the first to do them. And so having a, you know, a leading parking plan is something that we want to have in our city. All right, so here we're talking about, the chair talked about having multiple plans, and here what we're talking about, it looks kind of complex, but it's basically a phased rollout of what parking, how parking might change over the years. So we're not going to just have a one-time, you know, change the parking and see how it works. So left to right, we have columns that says short-term, medium-term, long-term. So how are we going to roll this out? And then with each, within each one, we have different levels of scales of change. And so we could have, you know, a lot of change would be high, medium amount of change or a low amount of change. So it depends how much risk the city wants to take in terms of changing things too quickly or seeing how climate change changes, for example. So for example, if the city wants to be very aggressive, then the short-term goal might be, you know, remove all parking minimums. Medium-term goal would be having caps or maximums on parking, which we haven't really talked about yet. And then long-term would be something along the lines of transformative change, which the IPCC reports are increasingly calling for, that incremental change just isn't enough anymore. If the city wants to take a medium level of aggressiveness in terms of parking, a short-term goal might be reducing, reducing rather than removing parking minimums. A medium-term goal would be removing parking minimums and adding parking benefit districts. And a long-term goal could be a citywide transportation plan and then instituting maximums. A low-risk plan would be a short-term, having, reducing some of the minimums, medium-term, reducing all of the minimums, and then long-term would be a parking benefit district. Now, none of these are cast in stone or anything. These are just examples of what the city could do, and the city might even start with, you know, a low-risk one for the short term, and then find out that it's not enough. It might go to a medium or higher risk one for the medium or long term. So this isn't meant to be prescriptive, it's just an example of things the city could do, that it's not just a simple, you know, one-time thing, that this is a multiple levels of planning that we need to do. So with that, I will hand it over to Commissioner, or Director Teague.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, and thank you for recognizing the planning commission and all the hard work they do. They do a fantastic job, and they put a lot of time in. Just like with this ordinance, we've put a lot of time in this as well. Also want to recognize Commissioner, former planning commissioner, Ian Nemroff, who, former chair of the commission, put a lot of time and effort into this as well. So just want to start off by saying this ordinance hasn't changed. This is the same ordinance that was presented to the council last summer. Our existing ordinance dates back to 1970, so it's in great need of some updating. As mentioned by the commissioners, this is kind of the first step in considering parking as a much, as a much, much bigger, bigger plan for the city for both off-street parking, parking on-street, district parking, all the things that they talked about. Again, some of the things that went into this ordinance, we looked at national trends, usage of existing parking lots in the city, mass transit, future, what's existing out there today, the desire to gain additional green space. So highlights of the ordinance include, well, primarily reducing the amount of parking that's required for uses within the city. It also, the ordinance also regulates a little bit differently depending on the node, which was requested by the city council, regulating differently for the different, you know, 50th and France area, 44th and France, et cetera. We've provided some incentives in the ordinance for shared parking, and we have added maximums. We had a little bit of discussion about maximums at the last work session. I would imagine that would be a discussion point. So this graphic on the screen highlights the current ordinance on the left and the proposed ordinance on the right. In the middle is the ITE Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Standards. A lot of the recent projects that the city has approved over the last few years required variances, and we've always done parking studies to justify those variances. And really, the tool that's been used by our consultants is that Institute of Transportation Engineers. So just to highlight some of the more, the land uses that we see most often, so apartments, the current ordinance requires two spaces per unit. The proposed ordinance would reduce that down to 1.25 spaces per unit with a maximum of 1.75. The ITE standard is 1.3 units, spaces per unit for a mid-rise and one space for a high-rise. For a medical office, current ordinance is one space per 200 square feet, proposed ordinance is one space per 300 square feet. The ITE standard is one space per 375. Restaurants, a lot of this ordinance started with that restaurant that was proposed up in the 44th and France district. The current ordinance regulates one space per three seats plus the number of employees on a maximum shift. The ordinance that we're proposing here is a shift in not regulating by seats, but rather by square footage. It's difficult for staff to enforce number of seats in a restaurant, but very easy to regulate square footage. So the proposal is one space per 100 square feet. The ITE standard is one space per 81 square feet. And I'll have a graphic that shows how those two compare to that restaurant that we looked at at 4500. Office space increases from current regulation of one space per 200 square feet to one space per 300 with a max per 300 with a max of one space per 200 square feet. So the last few here are within our nodes. So in the mixed-use district, we're suggesting 1.75 spaces per unit currently and a reduction to one space per unit with a maximum of 1.5. Uses within a planned commercial district office, one space per 200 square feet, reducing that to one space per 350, again with a maximum of one, of one space per 200 square feet. A shopping center, so Southdale, currently the regulation is one space per 200 square feet. We're suggesting that be reduced to one space per 300 square feet. And again, that ITE standard is one space per 340, 43 square feet. These next couple of slides provide, exist, or recent projects that the city has approved. I won't go through in detail each one, other than to say, the proposed ordinance, with the proposed ordinance, all of these projects would meet the proposed ordinance. So they wouldn't have required variances. Each one of these projects did require a variance. And again, we, the justification that we used primarily is that ITE manual based on the consultant report. Just want to expand here on the restaurant. So that restaurant that was proposed at 4500 France, it was a 100-seat restaurant. Based on that current ordinance, 43 spaces were required. Under the proposed ordinance, 42 spaces would be required. And that's using some of those reduction incentives that are in the ordinance. So that project didn't meet the ordinance at that time and it wouldn't meet the ordinance as proposed. The other projects that we looked at here were the 70th and France project, the furniture store at 69th and France, Amundson Flats, the Aon Housing Project, Hazelton Apartments or the Bauer, the 7200, 7250 project, and the Avenue on France. So again, the proposed ordinance, no variance would be needed for each of those. So options in front of the council this evening, you could grant first reading of the ordinance, subject to any recommended changes you may have. You could approve the ordinance and waive second reading if you're comfortable with the ordinance as written. And of course, there's a third option of taking no action and we stay with the ordinance that we have. Just want to note that also, the city council held a public hearing last summer. There was a lot of feedback on Better Together. Those comments were provided in your packet. There was also an engineering memo that was provided by Andrew Scipione and Grace Hancock in regard to reviewing the ordinance from a sustainability perspective. And they've recommended some changes that staff would support. And they're, they're centered around Section 3 that talks about the potential reductions in regard to transit, car sharing, environmental sustainability, and bike parking. And some of the suggestions are pretty simple, just adding language to clarify, posting bus routes, those types of things. And again, it's included in their memo. So staff would be comfortable if, if the council is comfortable with making those changes and coming back at a second reading. With that, I will stop there and we can all answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Thorough presentation. Member Staunton.
So going back to Commissioner Miranda's chart, what, where are we on the chart with this proposal?
I think he had that. I think there was one more, one more slide that showed where we are. What happened to it?
Ah, there it is. Okay. Forgot the last.
So we're, we're in the short term and it's.
So this is about the least aggressive, shortest-term option.
Yeah, I think really this is, the reaction that we had is bringing the ordinance to where we're at right now. So this hasn't really been touched. I would say there were a couple of adjustments made in the early 90s, but prior to that, this is an ordinance that was written in the 1970s. And so the adjustments, really showing, you know, the comparison to what ITE is bringing us in line with, with where we're at right now. And I think that's also evident given the, the variances and how various proposals would have fallen in line with that. The reason that we like to call that out is this is bringing us in line to where, where we're at right now. But if we as a city want to be more aggressive, be, be more forward-thinking and leaning with that sustainability in mind, we should be taking more aggressive action towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions.
So this is the beginning, not the end?
Correct. I mean, in my, in an ideal world, right, I think we continue with this as that first starting point. And then the planning commission would love to include in our 2023 work plan, continuing to look at parking as a whole, rather than just through our off-street parking ordinances, potentially coming up with a working group or something like that to really pull together all of these phases with timelines, right? There's no timelines here other than low, medium, and long, but really come up with that comprehensive strategy that drives us towards all of those goals that I started out with of sustainability, of, of driving, you know, safety in our community nodes and things like that.
And then, can you talk to me a little bit about parking benefit districts and what you mean by those?
Yeah, so the idea of a parking benefit district, and I always think it's helpful to root in our community here. So we think of an area like 44th and France. I'll use that as an example because I know extensive studies have been done, and I would probably look to Director Teague if, if more questions about that study are presented. But there was a study done of what is all of the parking within 44th and France? And the assessment was, it's not really underparked. There's not a lack of parking. It's just hard to find. Wayfinding's hard. You don't know where to park. It's, it's just not as navigable. And so when we think about, you know, the mechanism of on-street parking, that's usually where people, you look on the street and if it's not the street, you might drive around a couple of times. You don't always know where to go. A parking benefit district could, could be an idea of placing parking meters, probably something very technic, technology advanced, but parking meters along the street that would price parking such that there's always one or two open places on the street. The benefit of that, and this goes back to the right sizing of parking, the benefit of always having one or two open spaces means that you are reducing the cruising that's happening within that neighborhood. But then, when you think about adding in parking meters, the result of that is, well, what, what happens with that money? How can we use that money to really improve that area? So if we receive certain funding, we could invest that into improving sidewalks or improving wayfinding for other parking options, really looking at how can we keep the, the funding that, the revenue that is gained from that within that local community to keep driving up kind of the options for pedestrians and overall public safety.
So one potential use of that funding would be to build the district parking?
That could be one option. And I think that's where we'd really like to look at, who are we pulling together in this working group? And then what does that community need? And I think that there are a lot of really great examples of other cities that have enacted these parking benefit districts to look at what's worked well, what hasn't worked well. But I think in that area in particular, we'd really want to evaluate, is more parking at that node? What, what in particular is needed?
Sure.
Yeah, if I may contribute. So in terms of that parking study, that was done for the 44th and France Small Area Plan, which I was a part of. And what that study found, in fact, was that there's, there's plenty of parking, but it's not necessarily available to everyone at all times because it's privately owned. A lot of the space privately owned. And so having, as you described, you know, a shared parking area, that would allow less space to be dedicated to parking and more to other uses if the space is shared. So that's where that was going.
And I know I'm getting a little far afield here, but, but the publicly accessible parking, the on-street parking is free, but it's not really free, right? I mean, because we all pay for it. It's just that people who decide not to use it have to pay for it anyway because they're paying taxes and other things that take care of the streets and pay for it. Whereas if we require people to pay for it, then those who didn't need to use it wouldn't have to pay for it. And we could generate revenue to provide solutions that would be district-wide.
Right. And that's partly an equity issue too, right? So anyone who decides to, to bike or walk to the neighborhood because they live nearby, why, why should they have to pay, you know, higher prices for products because the rent is higher, because the taxes are higher? You know, that's a very good point.
Can you talk to me a little bit about the notion of maximums? Because I get the minimums, but, and I'm, and as I've watched over the years, watched the development community, I recognize that they have an incentive to make sure they have enough because if they don't have enough, then they're not going to be able to lease their space, or they're not going to get tenants, or they're not going to be able to sell their building. Why do we need maximums?
So in, in this ordinance, the, as the phases showed, you know, this is, this is a low scale of change thing. So the maximums, it's not maximums everywhere. It's, it's pretty limited in terms of what the maximums are. So we were trying to go for something that, you know, would be the start of a discussion about maximums and, and where they would be useful. But it's, it's, it's not like, I don't have the exact ordinance here, but.
Yeah, it's only, I recognize it's only on a few things. I'm just looking at the theory behind why. I mean, are we really worried that people are going to create too much off-street parking on their site?
I think when we began talking about maximums was when the, the Southdale Office Center project was proposed, where they had the three parking ramps. And in that project, they, they had provided about 700 parking spaces over what the city code required. Now, some of that was going to go toward district parking, but I think that where we began talking about that was, we thought that development had too much parking in it and that if we establish some maximums, we could avoid that situation.
Are there other ways for us to, during the land use review process, say no to too much parking? I suppose if it was a PUD, we could, but.
We could as part of a.
But if it were just otherwise, they could, so long as they met the bulk standards and the use standards, then they could put in as much parking as they wanted.
That's right.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've got this chart, Mr. Teague, Director Teague, that you put together. And I want to disagree with, or saying this is low, because it looks like you've reduced the minimums in every category in your chart. Office, medical office, retail, shopping center, restaurants, apartments, and senior apartments are all lower, except, I guess senior apartments isn't lowered. But the others all look like they've been lowered from the current ordinance. Looking at the ADINA 224 draft. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes. Yeah, in, in general, we are lowering the parking requirements almost all across all uses, with the exception of restaurants, that's generally the same.
I think, I think restaurants is also, it's going from, well, the number, the way it's calculated is changing. And then I see two maximums for offices and for apartments. So I think we're actually on the medium as opposed to low, low, low change. So we've got both maximums put in and we've pretty much changed, where we would be changing all the minimums.
Correct.
I just wanted to make that clear. And I want to thank you guys for this hard work. This has been a long time coming. And I remember when Chair Nemiroff, thank you for reminding us that, when he brought that up, I, yes, finally. So I know it's been hard and, and it's very complicated. So I do have some more questions. One of the questions I had was, do we need any additional powers to create a parking benefit district? It sounds like maybe it's just a matter of putting meters in, or is there anything else to that, that, that we would need to have different powers in order to do?
That's a great question and something that I would love us to explore more as we pick up more and more of these recommendations for an entire comprehensive parking recommendation. But at this point, I don't know what that would take, how we would do it, or all of the logistics. And I think a lot of research would need to be done.
Okay, great. I just would point out that with a lot of the environmental things, we look at what St. Louis Park is doing, but they're a charter city and we're a statutory city. So there are some limitations and that always is the first thing that jumps to mind, but thank you. The second question I have for you, I think goes to the 6800 France, and Member Staunton did that, that that could have been a situation where we wanted to lower the number of parking and this would give us the tools now to do that. That would be, we would project to the development community what our expectations are, so we wouldn't have to surprise them. And then with a maximum for apartment buildings, I guess what I'm thinking about is the sense that will this have enough space for apartments where there are roommates? Because we can understand maybe in a family, one car, you know, and they can commute together. But when you've got roommates coming together and some of these high-cost apartments that are getting built, will, do we have any sense for the market for how many cars are needed when, when we've got roommates moving in?
Yeah, it's difficult to predict. If we were to, you know, the mechanism to go over the maximums would be then a variance, you know, where they could prove to the city that they need that extra space so we could approve or deny based on, based on whatever the facts are that they present to us.
Okay. And then one last question. This is for you, Director Teague. You and I have had a conversation offline about spillover traffic. I know that was a lot of concern in the public hearing and in the Better Together comments. What is your sense of, as to whether this would create spillover traffic into neighborhoods? And especially with apartments, are people going to need to park on streets if there's insufficient parking? What is your sense of that?
Yeah, I feel pretty good that this ordinance won't cause that. You know, when we look at the projects that we've approved in the ITE recommendations, yeah, I was very mindful just because after going through that variance process at 4500 France, that was the big issue is that spilling out into the street. So that was kind of a, one of the priorities for me as we were shaping this, that we're not quite ready for that. It's, I think it's going to be part of a discussion moving forward, but I don't think this ordinance is going to cause parking out into the streets.
Okay, terrific. And then one last question for our planning commission members. Have you had a chance to read the memo from Andrew Scipione and Grace Hancock? And are you comfortable with the suggestions that they made?
I am, yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, terrific. Well, again, this is a massive undertaking and I know it's a, it's a front door issue as a mayor likes to say, that when, when this really impacts people, the way people live in the city. So it is contentious and you've, you've done a very nice job and a thorough job. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first off, I applaud the work that you've gone through. I think it's, I think it's very thorough and I do appreciate all the effort that goes into it. So just a couple of comments. Can you put the, I'll call it the Staunton slide back off? I, so I, you know, I support this ordinance, but I want to tell you why. Because it's not because of what you have in it. It's because of all the other things that you've said. And so what I mean by that is it is, it's a, it is smart to say, what we have been looking at was built, written in the 70s, so we need to normalize it for what we do today before we figure out how aggressive we need to be to get to the future. And so I just think that that is a very pragmatic approach. I liked the, when you talk about, and you talked a lot about goals and targets, right? Those, to me, those are the right things that we should be talking about. And so the philosophy of saying, we have an outdated ordinance that we're going to normalize for what we do today, and we're going to continue to look at it and understand what goals we're going to establish and tweak this as we move forward. That just, that resonates. That just, that resonates with me, because so many things are shifting. And so, I definitely appreciate that. I love that approach. On this slide, I actually interpreted this, perhaps incorrectly, but I interpreted this as a philosophy change. And so, while we made a lot of changes that are on the chart, we're actually are really applying the same philosophy as before. So, we've really only shifted, we shifted some numbers around, and then, we did a little bit of, we're going to now do square footage versus the number of spaces, but it really is applying the same philosophy that we've had in the past, but we are normalizing it for how we use parking today. And so, I, I think, to be more aggressive, things like parking benefit districts, I, the last time we talked about this, I love that idea. I'm not sure how to do that in Edina, or where we would do it, or how we would use the benefit, or how we would use those proceeds to, to provide additional benefits, but, like I said earlier, like, that seems like the right kind of thing that we should be, we should be talking about. And then, I'll use an example to Member Jackson's point about, if you have a roommate, you're in an apartment, you, we shouldn't necessarily restrict two roommates from having two vehicles. Well, I don't know that that's true, but we need to study that. There are apartment complexes that are in more highly dense areas, that have a requirement that says you can't have more than one vehicle, and in some cases, it's less than one. But what they do is they provide a share option for that, those apartment units. And so, you can, you could, I think, one of them is called our car, right? And so, that's what those are for. They're intended to drive down the need for parking, to eliminate vehicles. It's from a sustainability perspective, they provide a benefit, and I think a lot of those our cars are even electric, right? And so, I think we have to not make an assumption on what individuals might want or desire, but go back to your point earlier, what are our goals, what are we really trying to accomplish, and then use policy awareness and education to drive towards that. And so, I really think that that approach makes a lot of sense. And then, the, the question that I did have, with what we are proposing today, the mends and maxes, and the minimums and maximums, and then the square footage changes, do we have any sense of what, how that might impact? Your one chart does show that we've had a ton of variances, and that actually is one of my red flags, if, every time we have to have a variance, and that tells us there's something wrong with, with, with our policy. But have we thought about what the impact might be to restaurants or apartments with the current proposed ordinance changes?
Yeah, I really would just go back to the recent projects, because the developers we're talking to today, they seem to be asking for the same amount of parking. It's in that one, 1.3 spaces per unit range. Some go a little higher, up to the 1.5, but I don't think it would impact, again, their way to, if we keep the maximums, and they want two units per apartment, you know, they can make that argument as part of a PUD, and we could write that into the ordinance at that time.
And so, we, we don't necessarily think there would be negative consequences as things are stated with today.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, okay. And so, maybe the last point, I do think that we should, we should continually be asking these questions and tweaking as we go, because that actually is the other red flag. If we're making a change to the ordinance, and there is no sense of, of pain or growth from those changes, then that does indicate that we need to go a little bit, we may need to go a little bit further. And I think the measured pragmatic approach would, will eventually get us there. So, I applaud the way that you guys are thinking about it, and the way that you've articulated it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Go ahead and segue on that.
I think that, yeah, I think, I think Member Pierce makes a great point about this chart being a philosophy change, as opposed to maybe just a scale. And the example is, you know, this notion of providing off-street parking for your use has not been with us forever. As a matter of fact, when we first started zoning, it was use and bulk, and this was kind of a latecomer in the 30s, and now it's been around so long, it's a philosophy, and it's, it's a philosophy built on presumptions that there's so much space that everybody can have their, you know, their own kind of kingdom, their castle on each lot, where you have everything. You have your parking, you have your use, you have your building, you have your space. And as we fill in, and as we create an urban, more urban landscape, we don't want these seas of parking around each use, we want the uses and the buildings to create a place that we like better, that isn't just cars next to buildings. And so, this philosophy change is partly that, is partly saying, you know, we're still keeping these minimums, but we're moving toward a place where at some point, we can start to say, no, maybe, maybe we don't have to have everybody provide all the parking on their site, because if you can let go of that, then you can imagine a very different landscape for your building infrastructure, for your built environment. So, I, I think that was a great point. Thanks.
Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for, I know, I know that this was a mind-bending approach, and I know that there was a lot to consider, and, and part of it is, is that it's, it's, each one of these, of these zoning districts have their own usage, and I, it's difficult to find the, the exact right match. But I do think we should be changing our parking ordinance every 50 years or so, whether we need to or not. So, could you fill me in a little bit on the Nelson Nygaard report? It's referenced in here quite often, and it seems to be a, kind of a guiding light.
Yeah, was it included in the packet this time?
I'm not sure if it was in this packet, it's been in...
No, no.
It's never got, I've asked for it offline, but...
Well, I know that they're a consulting firm. I don't know, and they have various reports that I could find. I didn't find anything applicable to our town, but in general, I know that that's, it's been...
Sure. I mean, it's a, from memory on the spot, it was like a 20-page report, something like that. And it, it talked about parking benefit districts, and it talked about other cities, it had several sections, comparing it to other cities of similar size to Edina, and how they're dealing with, with parking, and how they're changing dealing with parking moving into the future. It dealt with parking benefit districts, and things from Professor Shoup about how, you know, his, his famous book on parking, and how, you know, parking, to some points that were made about, you know, equity, for example, you know, parking isn't free, there's no such thing as free parking, right? So, it, it speaks to those issues. Trying to think what else it talks about.
I think that it was really, I mean, they're a, a firm that would be kind of a partner, similar to what we've done, working with consultants for, you know, small area plans. They were a partner that we consulted on as we were beginning to think about off-street parking ordinances. And so, this is something that they're, they're experienced with, they've worked with a lot of cities, and so, they really provided kind of, some of what I included in here, of like, you need to think of it in its totality. We, we shouldn't necessarily, you know, just be looking at off-street parking ordinances, but all of the things together, parking benefit districts, including things like paid on-street parking, because they are all tied together, right? Transportation plan, and what our, you know, options are there tie in so tightly to what are our parking requirements. And so, they, they could just be a really good partner. They went through a guide with us, and we can absolutely make sure that, that it's available, especially given that we reference it. But just great partners in thinking about, what have other cities done, and what's a tactical approach to kind of change management in this sense.
If I could add to that, I think they really helped us frame the big picture, not so much in the, the ordinance that's before you this evening, and that's why I didn't include it in the packet. It's really shaped all the slides that, that the commission has put together in thinking about the big picture. So, I see them having a role in these next steps moving forward.
I think another big part that they could be relied on for a partner is in the communication, because I, you know, even Commissioner Miranda, right, we can read the 500-page textbook on parking, which is great, and I recommend it for everyone, but as we are, are trying to bring our community together and talk about these things, how do we communicate it in a way that, that other people see the vision, see the objectives, and can understand what the impact is? We read through all the same comments on Better Together. Overflow into neighborhoods is definitely something that comes up a lot. Placing it together in an entire strategy, and then communicating that strategy, is something I really think that could offer our community members a lot of reassurances. And so, that's why I think partnering with someone like that could be really beneficial.
Okay, that's useful. Thank you very much. And for, for Director Teague, is the average basically for apartments, you know, you've mentioned 1.3. My recollection is often we hear 1.5, that seems to be the number, but it's not two. And I want to thank you for the comparison here, the project comparison, because it's, and this is kind of updated, this one, from two weeks ago, and I appreciate that, because it's relieved a lot of my concerns. Because what I see here is that, that many of our approved projects are, they fall under this ordinance. So, that's, you say, okay, then that's working out. The one notable one, I think, and it's been brought up here tonight, is 6800, or the Southdale Office thing. And I think back about that, and there were significant design issues there. I, we felt, I know, that, that kind of precluded that. Now, they, they really did, they required or requested a lot of parking, that there just wasn't space for, and the water table was, didn't allow them to go underneath, and we never really got to the point where you could say, let's zero in on this. But I think that my, I, when I look at why maximums, I think that maximums, by establishing them, that it gives a range, it allows some movement, and that avoids variance requests. I mean, that's what we're trying to do, is to avoid that. Some of these variance requests have been, actually been to put in less parking than the minimums required, but there's still variance requests. So, I feel a lot more comfortable about that, so thank you for doing that. Could we move back to Member Staunton's favorite slide? The phases. Thank you. And, you know, we've chatted a little bit about these tonight. As I, as I look at this, I say, we are here, I guess on the short term, yes, we're on the low side, and that's, I think was your intent, was to be low as we start, correct? What I, what, what I worry about is what I don't know. That's, that's what I worry about. I, what I, I don't know, as Member Pierce asked, is this going to be, is this adequate? I mean, is this, are we going to have issues, are we going to have variances? I don't know that. I don't know when we, when we lay out a scale of change, I don't know what people who are watching this and looking at this right now, developers, I don't know if they look at this and say, oh, boy, look what these guys are planning, and I don't know if we can go there. If they don't know, I don't know. And that's so, that, that's what I worry about. This ordinance is solid, and I think it goes a long way to recognizing reality. And the, we can see from the comparison chart, the development community is, is correcting itself. We see that. They're, they're asking for less and building less, and so, to recognize that and remove the possibility for maximums and overruns makes a tremendous amount of sense to me. I guess the only specific issue that I would bring to your attention, and I would like to have consideration on that going forward, is when we look at parking spaces for nursing homes, hospitals, hospices, I look at that and say, you know, every single one of those spaces is visitor parking, and we want to be very sensitive to that. And I, I, that would be one area that I think we should take a good look at before we absolutely clean it up, because I think that, I think that is a mistaken approach. So, that, that's my only concern and consideration here. I worry, but we all worry. And so, thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, everybody. Great comments. And we've, we've put the onus on you so many times, I almost feel guilty while raising these supplemental issues, but I carry some of the concerns that Member Anderson has. I think one of the, at least it seems to me, one of the keys in your analysis here is your belief that there's going to be an increased mass transit availability, or to a more modest degree, you're promoting what I think the Minneapolis City Council wanted to promote was the use of mass transit, but we don't have the same kind of mass transit that they have there, and I doubt, with the budgets that I see, that, that it'll, it'll be decades before we have the kind of mass transit that, that we see in the, in a dense urban environment. We're just not going to be part of that system that operates in the same way it operates in Minneapolis and St. Paul. Now, we're going to have a new ABRT line on France Avenue, which is a good thing, and that may be a reliever on some of the single-occurring vehicles that we have, but nonetheless, the small steps that you're talking about taking, I'm pretty comfortable with, but Member Anderson touched on one of them that I hadn't thought about, and that was nursing homes. I've been primarily concerned here about what I'm seeing related to medical office and hospital, because when I go over to Ferryview Southdale, or I drive by Southdale Medical Center, every, every spot is full, and there's going to be more and more pressure on them, I think, over time. The hospital, you know, they may come with further remodeling, and I just want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a situation where now we're, we're short of parking at a, at a healthcare facility, and so now they've moved to the street. Now they've moved to Berry Road, and I don't know what your comments would be on that, but those, those are the two main worries I have, are medical clinic and hospital. And we're going to see more and more of that as we develop and broaden out this medical campus. In fact, when I talked to the people at 6800, where my office is, and asked, I just had a hallway conversation with the other day, they said they're coming back with a new, with a new plan for 6700 and 6750, that leaves the existing structures in place, but they're going to turn it into medical office.
Oh, wow.
Because they're getting so much demand for, from people and calls for a medical office. And so, that's a whole different parking situation, I think, than just regular office, which I was worried about at one time, and I'm not quite so worried about it. So, I don't quite know what to do on medical office and hospital. I'm a little bit reluctant to change those, because of just what I see from an anecdotal standpoint, and what I hear is coming. And the apartments, or on any of these categories, I mean, did you actually go out and talk to people that were in the apartment business, or in nursing home business, to see what they thought their pack, parking situation was, or, you know, go to a medical office, talk to restaurateurs, office buildings?
Yeah, we didn't. It was mainly just the developer, developers doing the office and apartments.
And you had the data, of course, on what people have been asking for that are developing multifamily apartment buildings. You had that data, which showed that you didn't need 2.0 spaces per unit. So, that's given me a little bit of comfort there, because I thought somebody raised a good point here about, well, what if you got a roommate, and they, I think it was you, Member Jackson, and they both want a car? Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand when you talk about, well, nursing homes talking about potentially it being mostly for... talking about potentially it being mostly for visitors. But with a hospital, you're also talking about employees, right? And so I think it's important to understand that, you know, changing this in the future and making it more restrictive, we'd have to understand what proportion of those spaces are used by employees and what portion are used by visitors, for example. Because, for example, an employee may be more likely to take the BRT line, which goes right along the hospital, for example. So, so I think that's, and that's partly why we talk about collaborating with the Transportation Commission. Because I think these issues relate not just to land use, but it's also the transportation network and how that develops. And I think that the E-line is going to be, cause more change than I think we're, some of us are expecting. And so I think it's important to understand the different people who park.
Yeah, and if you look at the ordinance, it's embodied in the ordinance. Nursing, convalescent, rest homes, at least one space for every, it used to be four, now it's recommended five patients or residents based on the maximum capacity building, plus one space per employee on a major shift, to your point, I think. Plus one space per vehicle owned by the building's management. Member Staunton?
So I just wanted to address a couple of the concerns that you've raised. I think one is that I think, I think rather than being aggressive, this is a recalibration from requirements, minimum requirements that were kind of arbitrary and we didn't know. And they were 1970s when land was available and you could just build as much as you needed to house as many cars as you needed, and there's not as much need for that anymore. The other thing I would say about the medical office especially is there's no maximum there. And I think the developers of those products are going to have an incentive to make sure, if they're going to be able to lease that space, their tenants want people to be able to walk from the parking lot into the, into the facility and do it conveniently. So I think they're the, they're the governor on that. And, but, but in the big picture, I think these, you're raising some good questions for the next stage. But I think what we're doing is just recalibrating to get this in a range where, we haven't talked to the development community because they've talked to us. They've said in every single application we get that this is all we need, and their projects seem to be doing fine. I do think there will be some differences depending on location, so, you know, to the spillover notion, an apartment building in the Southdale area, there aren't many options to go park on the street, whereas the Lorient, there might be options to go park on the street. So we have to take that into account as we move forward too. But, but I think this is, this is more of a recalibration for now. But we are going to start talking about the exact issues that you're identifying in terms of how do we, how do we go forward in a change of philosophy.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the hospital. They just added 50 new rooms for single occupants. And I don't know if that's affected their parking.
And that for hospitals and nursing homes, there's no maximums on those either.
Right, they're going to make sure they get enough parking.
You know, the, I'll, just to add to that, I do think, and I understand the concern that you're raising. And I think oftentimes it's the governor, for me personally, on how far forward I push. But I would say, we actually have to have everybody shift their paradigm. And we haven't done the work to do that. And so this really is normalizing from 1970 for what we've done today. And then we do have to do the, the work to shift the paradigm of everyone in the community. And we have to lean into that. And that's why, that's, to me, that's when the work gets harder to do. And I, I like the approach of doing it this way. And tongue-in-cheek to Member Anderson, renewing the ordinance every 50 years or so. I think looking at it with the right frequency allows us to shift and be dynamic as we go.
When Member Anderson mentioned it, it caused me to recall why we got in this whole conversation was on the Lorient, I think. And Member Fisher, at the time, he said, wait a minute, at least this is my recollection, wait a minute, he said, we're providing the same sort of parking standards here that we provide at Southdale Mall. You know, and that's that 50-year-old model. And then we asked the Planning Commission to fix it. And it needs, it needs adjustment, and the adjustment is small. But I worry about any kind of chilling effect on economic development. That's what I worry about. But we can always change it, I guess, if we have to. And...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was, I thought it was really interesting in the comments, somebody said, well, developers don't want to provide parking at all. And remember, at some of these developments that we've looked at, the cost of parking is astronomical. And so I think they have a financial interest in not having to provide as much parking. So I was kind of comforted by that, that the market is actually kind of leading us this way.
All right, well, the two main concerns I had were the medical clinic and the, and the hospital issues. And I think with, with the conversation we've had and thinking about the fact that they're going to kind of right-size their parking based on the fact that we don't have the maximum in place, I'm comforted there. So even though, you know, I want to make these changes, and I'm going to support it, the underlying situation for me is I don't want to do anything that causes us to have a downturn in our economic development activity. And I guess we'll all be mindful of that as we move along here. So, well, thank you all for being, providing such great information. And for leading your commissioners, fellow commissioners in this exercise. All right, is there a motion to adopt ordinance, let's see here, motion to grant first reading of ordinance 2021-07? Do you want first reading, or do you want to just wave?
I think we would recommend first reading, and we would make those changes that were recommended by the engineering department.
All right, let me, let me restate the motion. Motion to grant first, is there a motion to grant first reading of ordinance 2021-07? Plus the amendments are two, as were suggested by our staff members regarding these off-street parking regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Nice work, thank you.
Thank you. The last two matters we have, we had in front of us a few weeks ago in the public hearing format. And now it is time for action, one way or the other, on these matters. And Director Teague has both of them, the school district applied for conditional use permits for both Concord and for Countryside Elementary for some work that was underway over there. And I'm just going to turn to Director Teague, and we'll take them one at a time. We'll go with the, with Concord Elementary first.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the, of the council. At Concord, they're proposing a classroom addition. There's no changes to the onsite circulation, the parking areas. We had no feedback from the last, from the time you held the public hearing until the public hearing closed last Monday. So staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval of the conditional use permit that's subject to the conditions and findings in the resolution.
Questions for Director Teague? All right. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 2022-62, which would approve the issuance of the conditional use permit to the school district regarding Concord Elementary School?
So moved.
All right, motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then, resolution 2022-61 involves Countryside Elementary School. Back to Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, a little more to this one. There were six classroom additions, and they were also reconfiguring the parking lots to, for safety, to separate bus traffic from parent drop-off, from pedestrians moving onto the site. The Planning Commission added a condition that the school district consider EV charging stations. And the school district, as we talked about at the last meeting, they have agreed to that condition, and they're going to be including the conduit for those EV charging stations when the project is built. So with that, again, we didn't receive any additional feedback, and staff and Planning Commission would recommend approval, subject to the findings and conditions in the resolution.
Questions for Director Teague? I've got one for you. Some of the neighbors over there contacted me, and I think one of the, I think the school district employee that was here discussed it, but there was, it was an extension of the berm over towards Stewart to keep the, you know, the lights down early in the morning, late at night when people were coming and going, picking up kids. Is that embodied in the resolution? I didn't see it in there.
What's embodied in the resolution, in addition to the berm that's proposed, is filling in the gaps in the landscaping. There were several gaps around the perimeter on both streets, and the school district has agreed to fill those, those areas in, subject to working with Luther Overholt, the city forester.
Okay. So that sounds to me more like deciduous or conifer, as opposed to building up a bank, or filling in a gap in a bank.
Yes, yeah, it would be year-round evergreen screening, correct.
Yeah, so what, so where's the language about filling in the gaps in the, in the bank?
That is, yeah, so we're approving the plans, and the berm is in the grading plan. And the condition to fill in the gaps is one of the conditions listed in the resolution.
All right. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 2022-61, which would approve the issuance of the conditional use permit to the school district for the work they're doing at Countryside Elementary School?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Jackson moves, Commissioner Pierce seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion, adopting resolution 2022-61, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that is it for the bulk of the agenda this evening, folks. Thanks for your good work. Madam Chair is still here from the Planning Commission. She just couldn't get enough of us yet tonight, so thanks, thanks for sticking around. And then we're going to go to the manager's comments, which would include an update, I think, on quarterly business reports and maybe some other matters as well. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to highlight one particular item out of our quarterly, the Q2 business, business report. That is the, the status of, of our permits, building, building valuation that we are seeing so far this year. We are at, by the end of June, valuations totaling $254 million of new construction in a dinah the first half of, of this year. That compares with $170 million from the same time last year, so it's a 50% increase. And we will exceed, without a doubt, we will exceed $300 million this year in new construction for the first time in the city's history. That is a very significant amount of, of growth in the community in terms of valuation growth. And it will, if we do that a couple of years in a row, that will make a material difference in, in our tax base, and residents will, will feel that in a few years in terms of the way that we're going to have a bigger pie to spread our, our local government spending over. So it's significant.
Thank you, Agent Neal. Anything else?
No.
All right. Also, Member Jackson, nice to have you back with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's lovely to be back. It was hard to watch from home last time, but you did a great job. I was cheering you on. So a couple of things. I want to thank the police department, especially Officer Jepson, for organizing Night to Unite last night for us. It was a great event. I went out with Deputy Chief Olafsky and Officer Davis, and we saw a lot of kids, loved the flashing lights on the car. And I just want to thank everybody who worked to organize and just to show up to the Night to Unite. It was, it was a great evening, and it was fun to see people get together again. I've been looking at the, we saw the sketch plan for the proposed lifetime towers, and I have been reading about that and talking about it. And one thing that came up that I was thinking about was about park dedication fees. And I don't know whether we can have park dedication fees for this, but we're looking at potentially a lot of new residents, and I think that they'll put some stress on our parks. So I'd really like to see what the requirements could be, or how much money would be involved in that to look at park dedication fees. And I'm glad we had a good discussion about 56th Street. It's been a lot of complaints and, and kind of confusing things, so I hope that we get that all straightened out for those guys. It seems like it's been a long project for the Melody, Melody Lake reconstruction. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to jump around a little bit, just to note, the beauty league attendance over at Braemar is really high. I mean, they're doing great over there. Monday, the 27th, they sold almost 1,200 single tickets. Sold 100 season passes the first day out. I mean, that's...
What nights of the week do they play?
Mondays, Mondays, I guess. Yeah. So I thought they were two nights, but I'm seeing these reports on Mondays, but maybe they're only for Mondays. That's a compilation. Yeah, okay, it's Monday, Wednesday, right? Yeah.
Yeah, they used to play on Wednesday. Now they play twice a week?
Yes, Monday, Wednesday, yes, thank you. But the report is only issued on Mondays. Okay, so I just think that's a, that's a piece of good news. And last night was really fun. What I noticed last night particularly are the numbers of young children that, you know, were not really out in force the last time out. There were a zillion kids out last night. And I, that's, that's really kind of fun. And I can tell you of one who was wearing a biking helmet but jumped into the back of the police car and would not get out because it was so, I happen to be related to her, so I know about this. And I, that was surprising. She belted herself in. And I, the only thing I could think was, well, I hope it's your last time in the backseat of a police car. I mean, once is enough. You may, Mr. Mayor, discuss a little bit, Deputy Counsel Ashheim's here last week.
Go ahead.
It was the, I think initially, Dr. Ashheim invited our, our council as a whole, and possibly a few others. And the, Mayor Hublin and I were able to attend that with several other people in the area elected. And it was a fascinating experience. Number one, we got to draw them into the Cahill Bistro. And so that's really some local color, and they did a great job there. But the insight into what's occurring in the Mideast and his perspective on it was fascinating. And I think I felt that we really got a lot of firsthand information, and it was reassuring, that conversation was reassuring about our relationship with Israel and how that was viewed by the deputy counsel. So I, that was one, a very unique experience. And so I want to thank him for extending the invitation, and thank you for setting all of that up with all the people involved, and every single one of them appreciated it, so thank you.
Thank you. It was a good cross-section of elected officials and a few others thrown into the mix.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, great, okay, thank you. Member Sutton?
Nothing for me.
Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick things. One, the National Night Out was awesome. I had my daughter Caitlin with me, and so we had a good time. But the one thing that I wanted to highlight, and I think this is the reason we do this. So we were at the Village Street location, and we were about to leave, and one of the residents came up and pointed to Amundson Flats. And I was prepared for complaints or something like that. But she keeps talking about it, and I'm not quite sure where we're going. But then the resident says, you know, we should have better outreach than we have right now. And there are lots of kids in, in that apartment complex, and so she's pointing. And apparently she had walked over and talked to the... And apparently she had walked over and talked to the manager about National Night Out, and it was a little bit too late for them to try to plan something. And then she said, you know what we ought to do? And she's talking to their president, their, their association, you know what we ought to do next year? We should have one person plan both of them, and then we could do it jointly. And I just thought, you know, I'm prepared, because we have had issues over there. I'm prepared for that. And I just thought it was a wonderful example of our community trying to come together. So they took the, the to-do for next time to reach out and try to plan something together. So I thought that was pretty cool. And then my other one, I, I was at Braemar, I think this might have been last Saturday, and I'm at the driving range, and I'm focused, I'm dialed in, and then I hear somebody trying to give golf balls away, and they're pretty loud about it. So I turn around, and it was the mayor. And we were on the far left side. You didn't even see me.
I didn't see you.
You didn't see me. We were on the far left side. And I think the mayor turned to the, some young kids that were right next to him and asked, hey, you want these balls? They didn't want them.
No, it was too hot.
It was too hot. And Jim walked practically all the way to the other side.
Dropping golf balls.
Being the mayor, trying to spread some goodwill with giving away those golf balls. And so I thought that was--
I wish I would have seen you there.
So I thought, I thought that was funny.
I could have given you some golf balls.
You could have given me some, right? That's true.
You didn't holler, I'll take them.
Right. So I thought, it's, it's really cool to just be out in the community and then see folks that we're working with out enjoying our great community. So that gave me a, gave me a chuckle. And that's it.
Thank you. A couple of questions for Director Milner. As we talked about 56th Street, Member Jackson talked about it, it reminded me that we've got some issues on 58th as well that we need to deal with, both east and west of France. We've had several people contact us about that as well. And I'm assuming you're going to send some folks over there to look at the condition of things there as well, both east and west of France?
Correct. Yep, correct. We have a list of properties, and we're looking at the property proper, and then also the little strip of Boulevard area, which we typically don't like because we know it's notorious for not growing grass. We suggest day lilies and other ground covers. We're asking people if they want to switch to some of those plants, and we're going to correct some of those tougher areas out there.
Okay, good. That's good to hear. Same sort of customized approach you're going to take--
Yeah, that is--
--over there as you did on 56th.
Yep.
Because I noticed when I was on 58th, the yards that decided to put in those lilies, they're, they're doing great. They're tough.
Exactly.
And they look wonderful, but some of the other Boulevard areas look pretty bad.
Yep.
So thanks for that. And then 50th and France traffic study. Did you get somebody lined up for that on that east-west study?
Yep, we're working with TKDA on that. They're putting together a proposal right now. We told them we wanted to get that expedited, so once we see their proposal, I'll review that with Manager Neal, and we'll keep moving forward on that.
Okay.
So we did get approval from Met Transit. They're going to give us all the data. They're going to give us all their models, so we can start with, review their assumptions and review that model and start from there.
All right. I mentioned it to a couple of folks at the Southwest LRT meeting today that are on the Met Council that we were going to do this study. So I think all of you know that the big conversation with the Met Council is not about whether we want the E-line, the ABRT line going down France Avenue, but where to put the stations. And they want them right at 50th and France. And we're suggesting that they should be down at 51st and France, because once you start running those articulated buses, especially in the PM peak, when you've got all those people going east, our instinct is that it's just going to be even more congestion.
And the council has previously approved that policy--
Yeah.
--option. So we really are kind of sticking with something the council has asked for.
I had a meeting this morning with a couple of Minneapolis City Council members that wanted, that were on the tab. One is a member, Emily Kosky, and Elliot Payne, who's the alternate. And Emily Kosky, who's, I think, District 11, she said they, they had the same issue at 48th and Chicago, where they wanted to put it right at the corner, and they tried to get them to move it south without success. But it's going to have to be a data-driven proof to be able to get them to change their mind, I think. And I think it's, I think just instinctually, it's critical that we get it, we try to get it moved down further, those stations. So just an observation. So Member Anderson mentioned Daniel, Dr. Daniel Ashheim is a deputy counsel general for Israel, for the Midwest, based on Chicago. And they'd gotten ahold of me because I had been in Israel with a dozen mayors back in late March, early April, and wanted to come up, and he wanted to meet with some elected officials. So I was able to gather up about maybe, what do you think, a dozen, so?
Yes.
People? Yeah. And it was a, it was a real, really wonderful lunch, and he was real gracious about inviting us all down to Chicago, and anytime we're there, get ahold of him. So that was a really nice experience. I had Jennifer Garsky send out to all of you the materials on Southwest LRT. I thought this was a pretty interesting quarter management committee meeting in terms of the update of it. And I asked Director Benarot to just pull, I thought, I thought you ought to see the, and I think for members of our community, see the civil stage that we're at, the civil engineering stage. And this is, this is going to be it here. And she, I think Director Benarot will just run the screen here. So, you know, you think about the 20, it's still 2027 for projected beginning of operations, but look at how far along they are. And if you look at the overall system, they'd probably be in that 60% to 70% completion range. So here's, go ahead and just scroll, I think. You can, you can see the stations in Minnetoka, and you just saw one of the stations in Eden Prairie, there's three out there. Downtown Hopkins, that's a nighttime photo of that station. It's going to be a real nice station. There's that bridge over Excelsior Boulevard. You've probably all seen that. Go ahead, just keep scrolling. And, you know, there's a little bit more distant view of that. And then Blake Road and Hopkins, as many of you know, there's a bunch of work being done at that intersection with Excelsior Boulevard. There's one of the St. Louis Park stops, and you can just keep going. I think people can see the Beltline St. Louis Park close to completion. And then these, these C-Cant piles that they're driving in the, in the Kettleworth Corridor. It's going to take a while to get that work done yet, and they've got a temporary bike path open there. And then they're working on the Kettleworth LRT Tunnel 2. At the same time, they're putting in those C-Cant pilings. And then there's a new Cedar Avenue Bridge. And then there's one that's being used, well, just a section over in Bryn Mawr neighborhood to get over and get access. You can see all of the work that's, that's been done here. Go ahead and just scroll on. I think it's pretty fascinating. That's, that's the only bridge, I think, in Minneapolis. So that's about it. Thank you, Director Benarot. And I wanted all of you to see the, that update and see those notes as well. You can see the, in, you can see the impact from an economic standpoint. They had the city development updates from Dave Lindahl out in Eden Prairie. They're projecting, boy, Minnetoka and, I forget what it, they're over, I think they're over $2 billion in development so far in those three towns of Eden Prairie, Minnetoka and Hopkins. So that was, there's some, really some good stuff going on for those communities that are on the line. And then Councilmember Jackson mentioned Jeff Olasky, that she was, as him, part of the evening last night. He's our deputy chief, as many of you know, has been with the city about 30 years, and announced his retirement yesterday, and is going to retire, I think, end of August, 19th of August, is what I remember him saying. So we'll have to celebrate him a little bit. Maybe we can get him here for our next meeting and maybe tell him how much we appreciate him. With respect to the project down on, at Weber Woods in the stormwater management project we got going on down there, when I've been down at 50th and France, I see the side dumper is coming through there hauling dirt back and forth. It's really, I don't know how they're managing that, but it, you know, you wish you could steer them in a different direction. Why don't you go north on Excelsior Boulevard and, or go on France Avenue, go to Excelsior Boulevard, and go out to 100 and go around? But they're going up and down France Avenue. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but boy, it looks, it's kind of harrowing when you see those big trucks coming down through that tight intersection.
Yeah, I'd say it's that project, but there's other, other development projects in the area, too. We walked, we actually, Ross was out there watching and seeing which trucks are which, and, because we got some complaints on trucks, and--
Yeah, it's public road.
A lot of them, it's a public road. There's lots of cement trucks, lots of other trucks, too, so it's not just ours.
And then I did the mayor's minute today on something I thought was worth mentioning at the council level, too. And I don't know if we've got that phone number, Director Benarot, for FEMA. But the federal, apparently Congress passed as part of the COVID packages that they worked on, and the, I suppose in conjunction with ARPA and everything else, they're offering $9,000 to people to help with funeral expenses for COVID-related deaths. And we brought it up today in the mayor's minute because we had four folks just recently pass away again from COVID.
Five, as of today.
To the extent that folks want to be able to take advantage of that opportunity with those federal funds, you've got to call in to a particular number.
Yeah, that number is 844-684-6333.
I'd like you to repeat it one more time, please.
Sure, that number is 844-684-6333. As you mentioned, Mayor, you do have to call. It takes about 20 minutes to apply over the phone.
Oh, there it is.
And it's open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
All right, good. Thanks for that, Director Benarot. Yeah, that's it on, on my list, so--
Mr. Mayor, your comments on France Avenue and 50th and France reminded me, I went to a meeting that Hennepin County held with the residents on France. They're talking about a restriping project.
Oh, good.
And I think that we've heard about that. I attended, and there were two business owners there from 44th and France. And so what they're proposing is eliminating parking on France and creating a bus line, striping, or striping a bike lane instead. And there were numerous complaints from people who lived there concerned, especially from elderly people, that their guests would have a long walk then to their home and not be able to have family visit and things like that. So I'm, I'm going to write up a report and send that, I've been, I think I sent it to Manager Neal and Andrew Scipione, and I will be submitting some comments on that.
Okay, that's, that'll be good. Yeah, I know the merchants down at 44th and France have really been concerned about loss of on-street parking.
Right.
Rightly so, I think.
Yeah.
And I think Commissioner Latandras is sensitive to that, too. At least we've had conversations with him about that, so--
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I think that's it. Does that prompt anything else from any other council members? I think Councilmember Anderson is recommending to get out and see the beauty league, folks.
We can still get there, though.
I did, incidentally, meet one of our residents, Zach Farisi, who was at one of the high school grad parties I was at. So it was fun to meet him. He and his mother were there. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, that we adjourn the meeting of the city council on this third day of August, 2022. Anything further? All right. Those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We stand adjourned.[1778.23]